To the flag of the United States of America and to the right object for which it stands, "One Nation Under God, Indivisible, with Liberty and Justice for All." On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you everyone that y'all coming tonight. Uh, maybe we have a world call.
Mayor Morris?
Here.
Mayor Protheum Berbers?
Here.
Alderman Gray?
Here.
Alderman Madre?
Here.
Alderman Jones?
Here.
Alderman Johnson? Here. Mayor, we have the quorum.
Thank you ma'am. First order of business is a proclamation for Veterans Appreciation Week, which we will do November 8th through November 12th from here on out. Uh, I'd like to read this. I think it's very important that we remind ourselves of some things that we should be brought up. Whereas the freedoms we enjoy as Americans have been purchased and maintained at a high price throughout our history. And whereas since the establishment of the original 13 states, Americans have been willing to fight and die to preserve their individual rights guaranteed in the United States Constitution and the Bill of Rights. And whereas we owe a great debt to those who have served in defense of this nation. Whereas throughout the generations, their sacrifices have preserved our unique form of government dedicated to human rights and respect for the individual. Whereas for many, the sacrifices has ended in permanent injury or death, yet their spirit remains in the continued preservation of our freedoms and the promise of liberty, established as an example for all the oppressed persons of the world. And whereas, in honor of those dedicated men and women, we pledge our continued defense of our nation so that their sacrifice will stand before the entire world as a tribute to the spirit and determination of a people dedicated to the principles of freedom and democracy. Now therefore, I declare Morris Mayor of Jamaica Beach. On behalf of the entire city council, it is my honor to proclaim November 8th through November 12th as Veterans Appreciation Week and urge all citizens to honor our veterans and rededicate themselves to the preservations of our liberties under this constitution. Thank you. Uh, we're gonna have a presentation, uh, to Mr. William Bill Douglas. Ma'am, Daz would you like to read?
Yes, I'd like to have a little thing to read about Bill. Now his son Bill wrote this and I have the great honor of reading this. William F. Bill Douglas, born July 29th, 1924, in Galveston, Texas. Graduated John H. Reagan High School in Houston, May 1942. He enlisted in the United States Navy, December 1942. Please keep in mind that June of 1942, Midway was going on. Bill participated in the Navy's V-12 Training Program for commissioned officers. He began his studies at the University of Southern Louisiana, continued with midshipman training at Northwestern University in Illinois. He received his recognition and was commissioned at Ohio State University. First Lieutenant Douglas served during World War II in the Pacific Theater as gunnery officer and damage control officer aboard the USS LSM 21121 Landing Ship Medium and aboard the USS LST 850 Tank Landing Ship. He was stationed in the Marianas Islands. Bill was briefly held as a POW on the Japanese crawler after B-29, which he was aboard ditched in Colby Bay. The flight crew was rescued by a US Navy submarine. Lieutenant Douglas ended his service with the Navy in Seattle with a Bronze Star and an honorable discharge. Bill returned to Houston where he completed his studies at the University of Houston, married his high school sweetheart, and Amy Babison, and raised three wonderful sons. Bill and Amy built their-
You can tell who wrote that.
Bill and Amy built their first home in Jamaica Beach in the 60s. In 2001, they made the move from Houston calling Jamaica Beach their forever home. I'm the mother of a Marine and sailor who served in Iraq and I want you to know that we, as a community, and I appreciate your service. We appreciate the sacrifice you and your family made to keep us all free and as we appreciate all of our veterans. I also want to mention that if you are a veteran, please meet with me after. We have a token of appreciation for you, which is our Stars for Troops and, um, it's a wonderful program that we've been able to start with the mayor's blessing. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Goodness, how about that?
Thank you. We honor your service and dedication to the US-
Oh, thank you.
May I place this for your neck?
Oh, can you get it around there?
Yes, sir.
My son told me to wear this hat.
Thank you, sir.
Way to go, Bill.
Now to city business. I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Daz and Debbie for, um, uh, making this happen, doing all the hard work, the cupcakes and things that are out there for after the meeting. Everyone is welcome to sit around and visit. Imagine there's a lot of stories. This is an open forum. It's gonna be open for public discussion. Basically what we're doing is we're wanting to discuss priorities. We are gonna have order. We don't want anything getting out of order. We do welcome some participation, but please raise your hand. You'll be acknowledged, but we're gonna discuss some things amongst ourselves. When you do this, we're not gonna have any votes or do anything, uh, any decision-making. We're just trying to prioritize and make sure, I think this is so important, something that I really look for is for us to be able to openly communicate and they openly communicate amongst each other what they think is most important to them, to get done with city business. And I thank y'all. Anyone wanna go first with city priorities? So, yes ma'am?
Um, I have a small book I have to shop through, really small, um, to pick out a new piece of park equipment. So I know you guys have probably noticed the pirate ship we replaced last year. Um, and then we were not expecting this one to go out, the big piece to go out so as quickly as it did, but we have had great volunteer, um, volunteers in the past raise money for the park. We have plenty of money. We're gonna use the tax money because it is appropriate to use for that. So we'll be replacing the large piece of playground equipment at the park. And I would like to get around the same theme. Obviously we can't do like a giant vote for it, but if anybody has any other ideas or would like to see something, the one that we purchased has an age range of the smaller scale and this one I want for the large, you know, it has to go up a little bit higher because we can't just have kids that are too big for the playground equipment. So that's one big piece of the park.
You wanna kinda tell us, fill us in on what's been going on?
Um, yes, sir. Oh, I forgot one. I think while we're in the park, just so we can not go back to it. Um, we'll be installing a pickleball court. I don't know if you guys know what pickleball is, but it's apparently pretty catchy, so we're gonna catch on that trend and we'll just have pickleball there as well.
And I vouch for that. I had knee replacement a couple of years ago and I've gotten older and I've gotten slower and volleyball and tennis has kinda gotten to be out for me. Pickleball's a lot easier. Get your respiratory up, so I'm looking forward to that. Yes ma'am, go ahead.
So just, uh, at the beginning, you can see a little bit of statistics and quantitative analysis of what we're doing as far as permitting inspections and plan reviews. Uh, on September 29th, we held an employee benefit fair. All the participants are there, Legal Shield, Cleeve, Affleck, Edward Jones, Global Life. We were able to offer benefits to our employees, our reserve and our volunteer firefighters and just kinda open a little bit of more abilities for financial stability, healthcare, and just legal protection overall. Um, on the second page, you can see our flood protection program. We were able to recertify this year with our CRS, our Community Rating System for the flood program. This is really important. It's one of those things that the city does that nobody knows it goes on until it's not there. For every point that we achieve, for every class that we rate better, the owners, the property owners in the city can decrease their flood insurance by 5%. So my goal is to continue to work with Debbie Glassick, who is a specialist here in the county for flood insurance and continue to decrease our flood rating system. The problem is if we do not continue to recertify with our flood program, the property owners would not be able to continue to purchase flood insurance and many mortgages would be forfeited. So it's one of those things that we have to do in the background, but they don't get noticed until it becomes a problem. Next business meeting, you're gonna see that we will present a bid and a proposal to go ahead and start with the Blackbeard Sore Lip Station revitalization and repairs. Uh, the next thing on my list is the sore treatment plant bulkhead project. At this time, I haven't had any luck with bidding that is willing to comply with the engineering specifications that we have. So I have visited with Mr. Repartis in reference to the feasibility of the project and I will bring that to y'all so we can look at the feasibility of the project and see if it's something that we want to continue moving forward. The waterline enlargement program, this is replacing a two-inch waterline. It's a little over 4,000 linear feet of waterline. We're replacing it from a two-inch to a four-inch and the expectation is that that will give us a lot greater pressure, a lot more PSI on our hydrants as well as on our residences. I have outlined the areas in the report of the areas that we're looking at expanding those waterlines in there. Going back to the dunes project, I am working with Michelle at the General Lands Office. We are looking at, we have an application currently on file to, uh, to move one of our dunes in an effort to alleviate flooding problems both on Beach Comer as well as Jamaica Beach Road. And I also look at working with the dunes. I've got a couple homeowners that are looking at getting dunes in there and we also have to look at our walkover project that was awarded by FEMA a little bit over a year ago. So when we do that walkover project, we have to look at the dunes and it's also part of the mitigation program to decrease our CRS so that everything kinda goes hand in hand together. When we alleviate our flooding program, our flooding problems, we increase our CRS rating, we decrease our flood insurance rate. So everything goes hand in hand. It's kinda like a big puzzle and all the pieces have to be worked out together. So right now, I'm working with Michelle at GLO. We have an application on file. Then we're communicating as to where do we go from here. We attended a pre-construction meeting for the street construction program. I've listed the streets that we're gonna be working on. Some are gonna be a complete pre-construction. Some is just gonna be a mill and an overlay of asphalt. I don't have a schedule yet. I know that we're looking at starting on the Buccaneer side and on that side of Jamaica Beach. But once I have a tentative schedule of when we're gonna start on which streets, we're gonna put it out to everybody so that everybody can start thinking about how they're gonna accommodate moving back and forth.
There will be some, you're gonna have some rough times in a few streets while they tear it up. It's gonna take several days for that to happen and then for them to get the asphalt down. So everybody's patience, we're gonna ask for a lot of patience coming up.
Uh, on the park, the painters have finished the park. We cleared out all the cabinets and painted them as well. The water fountains have been repaired. The dog watering station has been repaired. Uh, the park was power washed, water sealed, the bathrooms were painted. We have received the basketball grins and the nets and the next project is to go ahead and get them installed. Uh, when it comes to the EMS and fire department side of our building, the EMS room had water damage to the window seals. That has been completed and repaired. All the ceiling tiles have been repaired. The floor is scheduled to be put in tomorrow. EMS staff is looking at being moved back from the fire department where they're currently staying, back to their, uh, their remodeled apartment by Friday, the 10th. Uh, on the fire department training room, everything will be put back the way it was so they can continue to hold their meetings and training there. The fire department PD bathrooms, the urinal was replaced. We are right now ordering exhaust fans and they will be placed there as well and they have been painted as well. And then what the stairs on the EMS side, they were covered with anti-slip resistant paint so that we don't have an accident there. And then on the fire department side, those stairs were water sealed so that we can preserve them a little bit longer.
And just so everyone knows, we furnish EMS departments so we keep them on the west end here versus, you know, going back over to Galveston. We like to keep them on the west end, in service to the west end. So we try to make it as comfortable as possible because there's been a lot of hours there in different towns.
And that's kinda the outline of the projects that are on the stove, you're saying?
Thank you. You good, ma'am?
Yes, yes ma'am.
Bread? Cheap breads?
Yes, sir.
Oh, do you have anything you wanna add or say?
The only project that I have a good report from for progress is the street sign project. The street signs have been ordered. We're gonna have double reflective diamond. I was hoping to have a crew ready for you guys tonight. We'll definitely have a proof ready for the next meeting. We're only probably out one month as to the completion of production on that. And then we would be subbing a crew to go and put them up so we can get them up pretty fast. The street signs themselves are 30 inches long, which is six inches longer than the standard street sign we have now. They're nine inches tall. They'll have six inch lettering versus the four inches that we have now. Double reflective. They're gonna be blue with white lettering. And the mayor has decided to, and the beautification of Jamaica Beach has decided to go with sea life images where the logos go. So there'll be a variety of sea life images. And so I think it'll be, not only make our streets a lot more beautiful, the signs more beautiful, but a lot safer too. It'd be easy for fire, EMS, police, and even you guys at nighttime, especially all those following you today, to find your way home if you didn't have the streets memorized. But that's really all I have now, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Kind of somewhat saying, you know, I'd like everyone to pay a little more attention to getting reflective, uh, address numbers in front of your homes to make it easier for fire and police to find you. That would be awesome. We're looking at visiting on trash. So that's just in its infancy right now, about trash, trash cans, what we're gonna be doing with that. I had to talk about the EMS remodel, which we did, the signs we did. Mailboxes, they're, should be getting ordered next week. So we're gonna have an additional bunch of mailboxes over here, including some large, for large parcels. So we'll get them and we're gonna add some more individual boxes. The beautification that we're also working on, well, probably it's been a little delayed and it's delayed because of the highway project out there. You know, until Angel Brothers figures out which way is east and west, you know, it's, we're gonna, we're kinda depending on him getting that figured out. For the entries, we're working on wastewater treatment plant. What happened with the fencing around that? Are we still on that?
That's ordered.
Okay. We're gonna be putting fencing, some nice decorative fencing around that interlocks with the, what do they call that?
It's green and colored.
Yeah, it's a green color and it will go right on top of the fence that's already there. Thing in the winter that I really look forward to working on is the beach areas, you know, getting our trash cans, everything set up, getting that looking more organized and orderly. Signs, the walkovers are gonna be great. We have the money already for that. We just gotta do it. So where that will be done, yes ma'am?
And you have the website?
Oh, yes. The website should be less than a month out in it. We'll have a new website where there'll be-
Three weeks, I'd say.
Yeah, three weeks. And we're gonna be, each council member will have a place on there is what we're looking for, for them to put information. It's not gonna be a social media, it's not to banner back and forth. It's just a place for them to put what they're working on and what they, what they're working-
Hopefully they have their own individual city website, or city email, sorry.
Yes, whoever-
No, I use your personal.
Right.
Okay, can you explain the walkovers?
Uh, we just located them. It wasn't real clear. Whoever did the engineering was not impressed. I was not impressed. Where they're located, one was on Jamaica Beach, or they were both on Jamaica Beach. Remember, we were looking at that?
They're public walkovers?
Yes, they will be public walkovers from Jamaica Beach Road, over the dune, onto the beach. We already have the money paid. That's already paid to us.
Two of them?
Two of them.
Okay.
And I just don't recall exact addresses where they're gonna be. But we've already secured the easement and all that. Yes, yes. Yes, ma'am?
Where did they park?
Now, it's not, it's not for, it's just to walk over, to get from the street, people walking. It's not to park on the street. And they can park on the beach, but this is for the access from the community.
They were going to the store from the beach?
Sure. Yeah, anywhere they're walking.
So it's for residents mostly?
Well, for anybody. It's public.
Yeah, if you're the non-beach side on Jamaica Beach Road, like we run into a house over there and if you're pretty far down and to get to the beach and you don't wanna go through people's yards, it's a difference.
Right. Versus using roads.
Keep the people off the dune.
How do we know they're gonna work with the new dunes?
Because we're having, the way, the way it's engineered, the way that, you serve.
The dunes aren't there, so.
The walkovers, GLO will not commit the walkovers until the dune project is completed.
That makes sense. The dunes are gonna be there before we do this. So we know that, okay.
Good. And when that's gonna happen is anyone's guess at this point. Yes, ma'am.
So we have decided we're going back to the dunes project. I thought we were extending the beach like they're doing in Galveston.
It's my understanding we're all gonna try to do it at the same time.
Oh, both of them.
I can't guarantee that because I don't work for them, but we've had discussions. That's more or less what we were looking at.
Well, hopefully it won't be another-
You're sucking the sand out from Mount the Gulf. Why don't you use that to build your dunes?
Yeah. Oh, that's what they're bringing the sand?
I love, we're hoping, we're hoping.
Okay.
But they're getting, yeah.
And one other thing. When are we gonna have the TVs working? I've been talking about that.
That'll be public, that'll be public for the other meetings when we have-
Oh, wait, because I was just wondering about the things y'all were looking at. It'd been nice if we could have seen them. So, okay, you just know me and those TVs.
No, it works. That one's on your monitor. I think only one of them was working. It's not really getting this one to work.
Yeah.
It's bound to be a TI, some person in the community that can help us with that.
Well, he's out of the country.
I'm sorry.
I thought one of you was that young guy.
You don't want me touching any technological.
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 Anyone else? Any projects you'd like? I mean, all this is room. We're working on it.
Yeah. Next meeting, we're supposed to be talking about the wastewater treatment plant bulkhead project and I discussed it. Alderman Madre, he had a great idea. He was wondering, and you guys are gonna talk about this next meeting. I'm not gonna be here and I wanna push for it. He mentioned, what if we were to cut off the bulkhead project for another year, reallocate those funds and try and complete the waterline replacement program, Page 3, why those vendors were here? So I'm not gonna be here next meeting, but I'd like you guys to consider and discuss that. I contacted the vendor that's doing the waterline replacement and he said it is available and it would be better for them while they were out here and mobilized. So repairing a bulkhead at the wastewater treatment plant, continuing our waterline replacement, I think this is a fantastic idea. I think this needs to be discussed and considered. One other item with the project we currently have going on, with the waterline enlargement project, we also need to get our hydrants fixed and we need to contact chief about any new hydrant installs. I don't know, who's plane that's going to go on to, but?
I've already started a conversation with our fire chief with Kyle and he's already given me a list of priorities as to what fire hydrants. We do have a little bit of money from 2021 budget year to buy hydrants as well as-
We increased 2022.
21, 22. And though, if you wanna come and look at the drawings for the waterline expansion program, I do have fire hydrants.
Will they need it, upcoming projects, and if those items get discussed?
Um, one that was a carryover that we haven't started, do we have a date for the ditch cleanouts, for the main ditch cleanout to get going on there?
Do we, that was not budgeted in this year, was it? 5,000. So we're gonna have to do a little bit and start with the highest need and do a little bit this year.
Are you talking about the main diversionary canal?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about the bar ditches.
Those two.
Okay, yeah.
The one that we budgeted for-
The main?
2020, 2020, wow. Yeah, the main canal, cleaning the debris out of it to get everything to at least flow through. to get everything to at least flow through that better and the concrete one there on Jolly Roger.
It's a diversionary ditch that runs here from Blackbeard going south of the north that empties out into the boat base.
Yeah. The more rains we get, I mean, we, we get a lot more flowing through there.
Uh, we mowed everything on Buccaneer, so that has been voted. And I actually placed a phone call today to get a bid on, on working on the, on the ditches and getting them graded up.
What about the main, the diversionary that she's talking about? Is that, is this a lot of?
Yeah, I just went ahead and get the bid because that cost us nothing is to get an idea of where we're at.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else out here? Any ideas, any thoughts? Okay, well, uh-
Go Astros.
Go Astros, yep.
Yeah, one thing.
One thing, hold on.
What's what happened with our security cameras at the entrance? The CCTVs where we could see who's coming in and out of the neighborhood?
Uh, we, we've got one building and we're, we're sending out, uh, bar cues for other companies to, to send in what they have now so we get a, a good snapshot of. Not happy with the, the first bid that we got, a little upset.
I'd like to add something to that, uh, that reminded me, and tell me, I mean, I may be way off base, but I have a friend that's a city councilman up at another city and they put license plate readers with their cameras. Any advantage, disadvantage, except catching bad people as they come into the community?
A lot of advantages right now, there's so much, um, there's so many court cases. Uh, there's, there's cities all looking to for, and it's not something that we want to try to.
It's like, it's also-
Any prognosis, Brad, when you think we might get through that?
We're just waiting on other bids. Right now we've been working with this one company that was, uh, homeless branding opportunities, uh, that were, um, seeing something they couldn't fulfill. And, and so after working with them for several months, when we had the final price, I'm just not happy with them, there's other product out there that is just as good, cheaper. And so that's what we want to go with. But we're looking at four stationary posts. Bob Smith and thirty oh five, Buccaneer and thirty oh five, Jolly Roger and Buccaneer and then Jolly, uh, Jolly Roger and Bob Smith. With those four posts with directional, uh, cameras in every direction, uh, we will be able to, to get that system in effect. Uh, I believe if I'm not mistaken, you guys budgeted for twenty five thousand on it. We're going to come in under that.
Oh, that's good. Those are going to be fixed or are you going to have one that people can move around?
We're not going to do the mobile one, it's-
Okay, all going to be fixed?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I was just going to say, the trend in Houston is stealing license plates and putting them on cars. And so the license plate running really isn't helping. And as an ex-prosecutor, to prove those cases, you're going to need to have an identification of the person who's coming in and committing the crime. That's where we're really lacking when we have so many surveillance cameras. But if we could catch them, you put the case together and get it to the district attorney's office and they should be able to prosecute those cases. So, but-
So have a security camera there with the reader?
Camera helps a lot. We, we had a, a guy kicked in my seventh store where we were living in Houston. And, uh, they had wonderful cameras and we were able to catch him and he's in prison, so.
Good story.
Okay.
I think Terry, um, they have a great-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Terry.
Yes, sir. Everyone please mark on your calendars, the thirteenth of November, the Lions Club is having a market and craft fair right here in our own, uh, pavilion, you know, park area. That's our second annual, last year was very successful. And the Lions Club donates every penny back to the community. So we're here for you. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question about the fire hydrants. So the common, uh, Bob Smith and Duncan has been out for almost two years or not longer than that. Can it not be fixed?
That's what we were just talking about.
I know that is the, I know you're going to work on it, but I don't know if they can fix the ones that are already there. Fire hydrant there that says hour service.
USW is in the process of fixing all, uh, damaged hydrants and repainting them right now in the city. That's, that's the next project rollout that they have. Uh, we lost our regional, uh, contact with USW, they lead up the company. Uh, but we have contracted USW to, to do a total fire, uh, fire hydrant maintenance through the entire city, which includes, uh, the, uh, corrosion issues and repainting of all of them.
And then any update on the digital sign we're working on? Are we still looking at the other people, uh, with the advertising?
Yeah, we, we have several bids, um, that have come in. I'm working with a vendor right now that was, uh, I don't know if you remember at T M L conference on that middle row and he is really affordable. Um, I know you already have pretty much the setup to just inset the, the little sign there.
Okay.
And that, that would really cost a bit, without it being, uh, you know, for like a better words, tacky.
Right.
They, they range from like eighty eight thousand to twenty eight thousand is what the range is. Same thing, same size.
Just better way of communicating with the couples.
Mayor, we did have a vendor come out while you weren't here and they offered to provide us with a free sign. However, for that free, they were going to advertise with other entities from around the island. Um, they came out during a business meeting, so we didn't hear them out in full, but they are awaiting council's discussion decision and we want to have them back up to discuss it. Rather large, I want to say it was eight by fifteen digital billboard.
They want a return on the fifty on the next business meeting?
Unfortunately, I cut them short because it was a business meeting.
But they're warning you, basically it's a, so we get like eight seconds?
So, yes, so I've worked with them-
Eight, eight, every eight minutes we get eight seconds.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Yeah. Three minutes?
But you get the whole sign, but, you know.
You know, like so we can put an ad or, or the hardware or whatever. I think it's within the city, not.
Right, when it, so when I worked on a market, I did a project, well, I did several projects with them, but that one that is almost identical to what they're presenting is the, the digital billboard at the corner of twenty ninety four and I forty five right there by the new water burger. Uh, so that's almost identical to what they're proposing. I don't know if, you know, I, there with the, with the elevation of I forty five going over twenty ninety four, it's not as noticeable, but I don't know how it would play out here in our city where we don't have an elevation.
I, I push.
But, but if you guys want to get an idea of what it is, it's, it's just like a billboard on I forty five.
It's a billboard. I mean, a colored one, it's like, it's there. Kind of like what Museum Kima, their, their city hall.
I mean, I know they are coming back out the fifteen.
They, they asked if, like, if we can, if they can present on the fifteen.
There were no decisions.
If, if it's okay with his asset, like she gives them the opportunity to present. And it's free and they would pay for electricity, everything, everything. They give the permission, they do.
Okay, well. Anything, anything else, anyone? Well, I'd like to adjourn the meeting and thank you for coming.
Thanks, sir.
Bye, sir.